The parcels are located over the eastern edge of Mill Village. Across Alexander Road is the Congry Park Neighborhood. And to the south is the Red Tail River Apartment Complex. The parcels have run into Alexander Street, which is a two-lane collector road. There are no SCDOT traffic councils on the road. The West Columbia Police Department conducted a count between September 18th and September 25th of 2018. And have had an average count of 3,817 vehicles per day during that week. Augusta Street is a two-lane collector road. There are no traffic councils on this road. And two of the parcels have access to the alleyways of Mill Village. Section 709 outlines the description and requirements for a PUD. The city zoning ordinance gives the following intent for the PUD district. The intent of the planning and development district is to derive the benefits of efficiency, economy, and flexibility by encouraging unified development of large sites while also obtaining the advantage of creative site design, improved appearance, compatibility of uses, optimum service, optimal service by community facilities, and better functioning vehicular accessing circulation. It is the intent of these regulations to allow development of large sites subject to specific regulations concerning permitted uses, but only subject to the regulations concerning the lot area, building coverage, yard spaces, and Building 9 insofar as City Council shall deem appropriate to fulfill the intent of this ordinance. Upon presentation and certification from the owners, developers, or other parties in the interest of the development of such sites, that they will adhere to the development policies which will fulfill the intent of this ordinance. Section 709 does allow the City Council to approve PUDs less than four acres if recommended by the planning commission and council determines that the PUD classification is appropriate because of the unique constraints of the land owing to size, shape, topography, or other physical conditions of the tract or tracts, or because the proposed PUD is consistent from a land use and development perspective with an adjoining PUD. The descriptive statement has been reviewed by city staff for conformance with the requirements of the ordinance. The joint public hearing and review of the planning commission and City Council are opportunities to ensure that the design and planning features be incorporated into the PUD district hereafter created and that the planning commission and City Council shall consider the existence appropriateness of such features before any amendment to the zoning map is adopted to create such a district. The applicant is submitting a PUDC, which is to accommodate mostly non-residential uses with residential uses integrated into the design as secondary use. As a PUDC that is less than eight acres, the uses permitted for the development would be asked for the C2 general commercial and the C3 restricted commercial districts. Some aspects of the descriptive statement are as follows. In section two, the permitted uses identified are single-family residential apartments, group housing, multi-family dwellings, retail office, studios, art galleries, restaurants with no drive-throughs, medical offices, rehab centers, public drinking places, and home offices in the dwelling units. The developer specifically permits section-rented businesses. I'll note that the applicant anticipates that building form and site design will help guide suitable uses of the PUDC. In sections three and four, the developer intends to renovate the existing 1,630 square foot single-family structure for residential use. Intends to renovate the existing 3,000 square foot garage for commercial retail use. Developer intends to construct an eight-unit residential apartment building. And developer intends to construct a 5,534 square foot multi-tenant commercial slash retail building. In section five, for off-street parking, developer proposes two parking spaces for the renovated house. Proposes one enclosed and one off-street parking space for each of the apartment units for a total of 16. Proposes 18 parking spaces for the new retail commercial building. And identifies zero parking spaces for the renovated retail commercial garage. In section six, the developer addresses the economic feasibility of the development. In section seven, the developer addresses open space and pedestrian connectivity to the general area. In section eight, developer states there will not be a homeowners association as part of the development. In section nine, the developer proposes to construct the development in a single phase with an estimated completion time of eighteen months from the receipt of permits to construct. And in section ten, the developer states the development will be identified, designed, and developed as a single effort to include architectural material and physical characteristics. Developer also grants authority to the planning commission to approve prior changes to the PUD. The developer here to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right, first up, Mr. Chair of Florida.
Corey speaking, I could briefly just offer one other thing from City Council. This isn't comments in favor or against this development by any means, but in having individual discussions with some folks who are here tonight who have run the Mill Hill. I just wanted to make everybody aware and remind everyone. We've heard about conditions in the Mill Hill, parking, road conditions. That's something that we have worked on for several years. We have secured the funding to fix all of the city's infrastructure there. We've worked to get the right to control those roads and maintain them. We have the money sitting in a bank account. We're in the process of designing a rework of all of the water supply lines, drains for the entire Mill Hill. Once that work is done, we will be redoing all of the street surfaces and incorporating improved parking throughout the entirety of the Mill Hill. That's something which will occur regardless of whether or not this PUD goes forward. But I know I've heard the folks in relation to this about some of those condition issues. Just wanted to remind everyone that the city has secured that funding and that will be done regardless of whether or not this PUD goes forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And one other thing I just wanted to point out before we get started on any side thirty minutes. Okay, yeah, before we get started, I'll give each side thirty minutes. So, Mr. Taylor?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, and Mayor, and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present this project to you tonight. I've been working on this for a while. It's exciting to be able to share with you. I live in Congry Park across the street. I've been there about six years. I was a developer of Congry Park back in 2004. I moved to West Columbia in 1972 in Casey, so it was a big jump. And I graduated from Casey High School, so this means a lot to me personally. Because I'm not down, I'm here. I'm an architect with LTC Association, so I don't care where it took as an undergrad student. Just for the sake of orientation, when I make reference to the plan that you see on the board there. If we look all the way to the right, that would be parcel one. The next structure to the left, parcel two, parcel three. And then the existing house, I'm going to call parcel four for reference purposes.
That's Coach Bray's house?
That's not it.
That's Coach Bray's house for anybody who needs a physical reference.
Parcel one is the old Snell Road Garage. It was built by the Snell Bros. in the mid-fifties. And the existing house there was also the Snell Road residence on parcel two. But we do not have part of this development. The open area, the green grass, I'll share a little bit about the history of that. And then, of course, like Mayor said, the Bray family residence will be retained and renovated as a single-family dwelling. Just a little bit of history with all these components. And I just found this recently, even after we prepared the plan, if you don't mind, just. Basically, what I have here is the sandboard maps. I just stole a map from West Columbia, and I just wanted to point you about. I think you can orient yourself pretty good. This is the 1950 map. And then I'm going to let you share the 1956 map. The 1950 map does not show or reference the garage or the residence on the property. So it was built sometime between 50 and 56. If that's however, on both 1950 and 56 maps show attached dwelling units on the parcel that we are considering for the multi-unit area. So I found that interesting, and I'm going back to the way it originally was. And if you will indulge me just a little bit, I got this thing on the day. I think it's worth sharing. It's from the great nephews of the Snell Brothers. I was talking about my neighbor, Steven Kelpie. I graduated from Brooklyn Casey High School with him. He's a friend. And I've been sharing their developments with this property with him. He just wanted to be, he wanted to be here tonight, but he couldn't. So if you could let me read what he's sent today. Wes, thank you for sharing these plans and bringing for me one of the basic use of this property. As I mentioned to you, this property belonged to my great uncle and great aunt Sam and Aunt the Snell Road for what I believe to be over seventy years. Aunt was my grandfather's sister. Her husband, my great uncle Sam, owned and operated Snell Road's garage at this location. They first lived in the house next to the garage for twenty years while my uncle worked at Ginyard Brick. The story of my family is that when my uncle Sam decided to leave the brickyard, he was very worried to tell Mr. Ginyard. But instead of Mr. Ginyard being upset, he gave my uncle all the bricks to build the garage structure with my aunt him and every single brick that he laid with his own hand. I've heard this story directly from my aunt many times. She and my uncle were very proud of the business in this location and loved it. Close to another of my aunts made a shulper. Aunt the sister and her husband Carl lived in the Mill Village right behind the garage. This property was great, work-built place. Well, before that, it was even a thing. My mother, who is now a pensioner, told the fun stories growing up around her aunt and uncle to this day. But thank God for the shared with that and the history of the Snell Road property. As Wayne said, the property is currently zoned. Parcel one and two are C3. Parcells three and four are residential zoning sign iron. The intent in this place is to keep parcels one and two commercial and to keep parcels three and four residential. You know, not to just reiterate so much of what Wayne's already shared with you, but the lawful uses really just follow the commercial kind of uses, single-family apartment, group housing, multi-family dwelling, retail office, studios, art galleries, restaurants, in some capacity with a drive-through, that office rehab, public drinking places with specific exclusions of section-rented business, but a special inclusion of home offices within the development. They're trying to encourage some new component to the residential. As Wayne said, the off-street parking intended to provide is there's two parking spaces on the single-family resident. On an eight-unit building, there'll be two off-street parking, one enclosed, one off-street for the apartment building. A multi-tenant, it's eighteen spaces, which is a little more than three and a half thousand on that. And the existing garage has a parking that will manage. I think we realize in West, five years since I've lived in the neighborhood, that the pedestrian capacity of that district, West Columbia, is not a problem. I mean, the amount of people that walk through this part of West Columbia is wonderful to see. You know, there are available parking, city parking drives within a lot. While anybody's always concerned about property being comfortable there. I believe that the popularity and the interest is going to occur in this development. That we'll be able to handpick the proper mix of tenants to balance the situation. One of the things in the plan is, you know, the definition of step lines. The front setback on Alexander Road would be ten feet. The existing setback with the garage, now it's actually three feet. It will remain so like this. The side setback on Alexander Road would be ten feet. The side setback along Alexander Street. I mean, Augusta Street would be ten feet. But the side setback to parcel D, which is the last one, which is up against the cap of zero. It actually, the houses, it's not actually a percentage, we did it on the alleyway. Rear setback along Alexander Road, alley to ten feet. The existing rear setback to the existing garage is kind of a key word. And the rear setback along Alexander Street is zero. The height limit we've asked for is a limit of fifty feet. I can share with you the components of the project. It won't be a question. A lot of coverage should not be greater than fifty-five percent. Each individual parcel ranging, I believe, like forty-two percent maybe, but if you're stuck at this garage, which is again existing. In terms of signage, all the existing C3 zoning by extension ordinances will remain effective and tactical. Fully complied, not even further stringent, moving to that. I do have a couple of concept renderings with me tonight that Wayne has on the board. Touchstone character for the proposed project. This is Alexander Road looking to the north. That's an eight-unit apartment building. And then the distance next to that is the five thousand square foot retail, multi-tenant retail. And then the far distance is the white garage, which is the existing garage which we renovated. And then the rendering looking more towards the Casey direction about its number. The forefront, you know, the renovated garage area. The multi-tenant retail, and the background of the eight-unit apartment building. Also with me tonight is Dustin Johnson with Phil Engineering. If he's here to answer any specific engineering questions regarding drainage and the obvious, you know, proliferation of visiting visitors. So if you need to be prepared, I'll answer any questions.
Anybody else? Planning Commission or Council have any questions?
Yes, Chairman. I'm sorry, I think this would be any of you's table.
Yes, Wes Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, I don't have a copy of your site plan. Do you have a copy of the site plan? I mean, the one that's on the TV screen. I didn't see that far away.
I have a full-size copy. I'd like to share everyone that they can see. I mean, I know that's a surprise.
Yes, that would be helpful to me. And then where does that line up on the original plan? This is this map, the old map.
I didn't want to draw that. I didn't want to continue. You don't have to.
I didn't realize the microphone was not working. Were y'all able to hear his presentation? Okay. Better now? My apologies.
Mr. Taylor, do you have anything else?
Yes, Mr. Taylor, I also heard you say, if I'm correct, you say that you're asking for a fifty-foot height on the buildings?
In the PUD, the existing apartment building we shown now, the tip is forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yes, sir.
And so that will be, I mean, and that will be, it cannot go higher than forty-two feet? If we approved the PUD?
It doesn't say that right now, but I'll be willing to do that.
And how many stories would that be, three?
Four.
Four?
Yes, it's actually a garage level, two living levels, and a rooftop. Yeah.
So the garage would be underneath for that area?
Yes, and on the, on the, excuse me, the Augusta Street side, it's probably about twelve feet less than that, so right around thirty to thirty-two feet. Because the roof slopes from the low side up towards the river to the higher point.
Anybody else? That was my question. Mr. Shirley, currently in C3, is there a height limit for the C3 void?
Yes, there is.
You don't know, right?
I've been related to the coordinate of the comments.
I got you. And how about for the residential component? You know, by any chance?
I do not, but I'll find it. I'll try to.
Anybody else? Do you have a question?
I have a question. The color, the color elevation that you had, Councilman Boy. I thought that was very cool, the sandboard map reflected the same thing. There was something interesting in playing around. When, if you pulled the 1912 sandboard map, where Saint Anne's Alley is on, in that little area, there were two bell-shaped alleyways that existed back then and when they, when they developed. So it's kind of finding out, kind of becomes full circle. Sure, it made sense back then, made sense now. But that's a, that's a great observation. I love the, I love the multi-family aspect there because the taller buildings, that blocks the roadways on Alexander Road. The question was, if you look at these sandboard maps, the roads, intersection geometry isn't the same. Like, newer roads kind of, it tends to, they round off corners a little bit. So cars can navigate a little bit easier. But I noticed on your elevation, that there's a sidewalk on Alexander Road that stops when it hits Augusta Street, which makes it where if somebody were in that neighborhood in that section of Augusta Street, they'd have to walk into the roadway.
It's volumizer.
Not ours.
I mean, we certainly believe in the pedestrian quality, like I said, of the district. So, you know, connectivity is important, as I said, important to this project. And so if they got missed on there, I mean, we certainly, you know, that's, that's going to be a priority for us is pedestrian connectivity. So that, that might just have been oversight.
Okay, and then I have.
You'd be able to walk on the street.
And I have, oh, great, thank you. And then I have one more question. The drainage, in this, in this neighborhood, I understand that standards practice for, for American infrastructure is, you know, is hard. Pipe, pipe, just about everything. This neighborhood when it was built, the streets are designed where all of the houses have a curb in their front yard. And most of, most of the catchment, the red wires permeates on site. And what flows on the streets, there's my choices, produce the same street. Yeah, but I noticed that it looks like on the alleyway, the paving to the alleyway for parking sites, uh, spots, and that's actually great. I love seeing the alleyway as used and bringing back the life. And I think that's going to inspire a lot of people. But I do have some concerns about what kind of impact that kind of, that kind of development might have on, on sort of the, because I think there's a couple of, at the end of Hudson Street, there's a drain that sometimes gets overwhelming and stuff. Is there anything that might be able to, and Saint Anne's Alley, another thing they did is they.
Yes, I heard you. Yes. I'm glad that Dustin walked up behind me when we started talking about this because I'm going to let him take the mic. But I want, I want to say two things in response to those comments. We have discussed on the additional paving on-site, whether it be the access to the apartments and parking relative to the retail side. I'm going to do a pervious paving outstanding. And, you know, both from an architectural standpoint, the visual of it, but also we realize that we have to be sensitive to the stormwater runoff. You know, we haven't fully calculated yet, but we do, if you see, there is still a large amount of green space where the apartments are shown. And so if there's, if there's any kind of capacity there, we're going to, if we can physically use it, we talk about using that.
Right, yeah, one thing I learned from the Brickyard Branch Water Association efforts is where, if you're building this close to the river, I understand you pipe right near the river. But from a, from a pollution standpoint, the river runs clearer and stuff like that. If you do, if you do a pervious paving and catches the water and the water flows more slowly, it takes a lot less time, so the river runs more clearly, especially as time goes on and you do twenty different projects. So anything like that that you can work into the plan, I think it's just absolutely wonderful. And I, I actually like the plan. And thank you for showing us this story for the game and that keep pervising. That's all I got to say about that.
I'm Dustin Johnson, building the name. The only comment I'll add to that is, yeah, we've looked at some preliminary things about, we know a stormwater is going to be one of the things we have to kind of plan for and then how, how we're kind of going to fill it in and fill what is existing. And if it's explored, we can add some things we have to account for. So we had talked about some creative solutions like pervious paving, etc. And it all really affects the area. And there's also options for still good-looking storms that are featured that improve water quality in that front of the asset. So, I mean, value our focus is making something that's attractive, also improves water quality and plantness. So we're definitely on this end of the track. We want to make sure this good-looking project, and if, and if there's a negative, if it's a problem worse and helps face the future.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in the argument here, Street, the maximum height outright is thirty-five feet. There is allowance for additional height of setback offsets. And the C3 district, the maximum height is forty feet. And then there's additional height setback offsets. Or there's also the option for special exception, up to seventy-five feet without setback offsets.
And this is not terribly over what the limit would be in general.
Exactly.
You guys have any questions, Billy?
You know, we have a question I have, Mr. Taylor. You know that we have done citizen building down there in the Mill Hill area? And we came across many of these springs there. Have you, have you taken that into account with essential groundwater, happening and spring, especially across very tall people or recently?
Right.
I mean, I know that that added a huge amount of cost for us down there when we were in Philly.
Well, you know, as I say, this is my neighborhood. I'm there often. I haven't witnessed any.
Well, in the park we built.
Right.
We ran across a lot of groundwater that we had to take care of.
The, the, the new building we're proposing is going to follow the footprint of the existing house, the garage's existing, the house's existing. You know, the biggest liability we would have would be addressing the apartment building. Of course, the most present themselves would like to respond.
Anybody else? Any questions, Mr. Taylor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have anybody that would like to speak against it?
Yes.
You step up, I'll get your name and address. I would appreciate it.
My name's Philip Bodie, 122 Augusta Street. We've got a much proper map with traffic on our street. Has a traffic study been done on this to see how this is going to increase traffic? I mean, we can't even get our vehicles up and down Augusta Street to see it's because of the parking issue. Building were promised down here at the end of my street. It's going to increase traffic, correct? That's a traffic study been done about that.
So back in 2018, please follow the account book about what we put. That's the only information I ever learned, traffic. But the one person, person I.
Mr. Taylor, do you, does any traffic studies in the area?
Yeah.
No, that's a thing, a traffic study needs to be done. To see if this is going to increase a lot of traffic. I mean, people are using my street that I live on, from State Street to Alexander Street, as a cut through. Traffic is going to increase if you build apartments down there at the very end. We have enough problems with this Red Tail on the River apartment complex over there during the summertime, music blaring at one o'clock in the morning. You got to call the police to try to get it to stop. You build apartments down there, is it going to increase that too? We moved, we bought this house over there on Augusta Street quite a few years ago for peace and quiet. But, yeah, you don't know the older people that live over there. That's the way we like it. Now, you're going to build new apartments over there. I don't know who's going to move in there, but I like my peace and quiet. I don't like to be disturbed by a lot of families. That's a lot of people here, my neighbors, that don't like a lot of noise in. You build new houses or apartments on there, I just got a feeling that stuff's going to increase if we don't. if we don't want that. By where I'm at, I like my piece of quiet, and that's the way we want it. But I would appreciate if they do a traffic study. Augusta Street, Carver Street, streets are torn up, like the mayor said, they're gonna fix that problem. I don't know what they're gonna do with the parking on the streets or stuff like that, I just feel as though if you start putting businesses down that corner, at the bottom of my street, apartments, your traffic is gonna increase, and then if it then increases, we got kids over there that play, people still speed up and down Augusta Street. We were standing out there on my front porch the other night, a car went by, I couldn't even tell what kind of car it was, it was going so fast. So, that's issues that you're going to deal with, that's what you need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Lily in Brickhouse, I live in the Bill Village, I've lived there for over thirty-something years. This building that they're gonna build is gonna increase on the back of my property, is where I live, that's our privacy, we don't have front because our front is nothing out here, so our, where we do our sitting and entertaining, our being family, guests, sitting on our patio in the back. So now we're gonna have to look at this structure that's gonna be blocking my view from the road, it's gonna be the back of a building that's not a house, it's gonna be a business. I don't know if I like that idea, I don't know that I'm totally against doing something in that space by all means, but I don't know what they're, what we're, what Wes is projecting is great for us. I know there's a lot of elderly that live on my street as well, there's been other things that's happened around that property, and they all come to me and they say, what are they gonna do? What's gonna happen to us? Where are we gonna have these people here? Are they gonna tear this building down? These elderly people, they look at me to give them answers, because they think I know something that they don't know. So I wanna be able to come back and explain to them what's happening, and what we're gonna be faced with. But I do know that looking at the back of a business, where I've lived for thirty-something years, I'm not gonna be super happy about that. I thought I heard something about some townhouses, I love the fact that somebody can live there, I live there as well. Whether it be rental property, I would like to see more renters be out of our neighborhood, and that more elders come in, the same as myself and other people have done. We want people to come in and, and make home and be community there, and take care of their property, and wanna be a part of a community. Renters come in and out, you never know who they are, what kind of renting business people have, but I do have a concern about a forty-something, fifty foot something structure, looking, and I come out the back of my house where I sit on my patio, and that's what I'm looking at. Something commercial. I would like to have something that looks a little residential would be great. There's tight parking there, I know the neighborhood, we've already spoken about this thing that's gonna be happening in the neighborhood, I don't know what they're gonna do about our parking, but I only have four little parking spots in the back of my house. Those are for my house that's next door to me, and the house that I live in, I'm in to have the duplex there. But when my mother, or my aunt and uncle, or somebody wants to come over and visit, or have a family function here called birthday party, we already park on the easement of this property there now. Where are my, where are my guests supposed to park? We don't have any room in the front of our house to park. There's no assigned places for people to move, to move their parking. That does affect me, that does concern me about what is going to be sitting there now. Like I said, I'm not against something happening in that piece of property, I just think I'm concerned about the height of it, and that it being a business, I think, I'm okay with people living there, because I live there. But when you look at a business, and I gotta look at what, some kind of back doors to some business, we use our back of our house as the front, and that's what I'm about to look at every day. That just don't kinda look so, but it got a nice beautiful view, the wall with all the beautiful foliage planted, and looking right over into Congry Park, that's a beautiful view, we, we love to sit there and watch people walk their dogs and walk up and down the sidewalks, we do it as well, we use that as well, we walk it. So I, I think I'm just more community oriented than I am a business. Keep the business, you know, like down there on the end where all the business is. This is a development of a housing, now we're gonna have some kind of business right here in the middle of, of, of community? I, I, I don't really know how that's gonna work, I'm not totally against it, but I'm not gonna say I'm all for it either, because it does seem like it affects me. And I have other neighbors too that's gonna affect their, on our street. And all, most of everybody on my street, we use the rear of our house as where we park, we do not have frontal parking, we all have to park in the rear. Are y'all gonna make some parking for us? I mean, we, we got a building getting out, I'm glad they're not tearing down the existing structures, I really feel best about that. I don't, I think, I thought they were gonna mow everything down. But keeping the garage, keeping the old stairwell home, I knew Mr. and Mrs. Stambro, I lived there before they died, passed away, so I know them very well, and I know Steve too. You know, he run a business there, the nephew. So, I mean, he was always good to us, he didn't mind that we accessed his property a little bit, when we had family functions together, as I do worry about where, what's gonna happen to us when this is existing there now. So, and, and I know that something's coming, I know Wes would have never bought this property if he couldn't have done something with it. And I'm, I'm aware of that, I knew something was coming, I've lived there for thirty-something years now. But now we'll have to be faced with what's gonna be there, and we are a neighborhood, we would like to stay in the neighborhood. I'd love to walk down to the Riverwalk Park, walk down to Black Rooster, have dinner, go over to Savage, then Arak Park, all of that stuff is wonderful, it's all walking business stuff, but it's not in my backyard. So, I don't know what we, I don't, I think he's proposed what he wants to do, this is what I feel like is going to happen regardless of what I say or not. But I do need that people understand that we live there first, and that we want a community there, and I'm really not, I don't know that I'm so excited about business in my backyard, especially when y'all talk about alcohol, go do that at home, I don't want people in my backyard at some, I don't know what kind of alcohol related thing, but you know, we see all kinds of stuff, I worked with Mike for many years, we see people do stuff really crazy, drinking in our parking lots. So, I mean, I don't want people trashing the stuff, and being out there at ten o'clock at night, having an argument, twelve o'clock, we hear foul language, and things happening, and I don't hope that that wouldn't happen, I love Wes' one B three's apartment, I think they're awesome, they're always there when we need them, but people will have to call the police all the time, on a bunch of drugs. Think about a bar in the back of your yard, think about a business in your backyard where your privacy is, where you frame your family. That's all I wanted to say, thank you for your.
Anybody got any questions at all?
I think the one thing that's important to keep in mind here too, she brought up the heights of the businesses that are being proposed. If we did nothing and somebody came in to build, they can still build that, that height of building without a problem, you know, with some slight modifications, we're only talking about two foot difference, so, I think that's important to keep in mind. Anybody else?
I think they could actually build the portions behind her, where the businesses are going, under the current thirty-five foot, I don't think the business portion's gonna be around thirty-five feet. Also would like to point out that, of course, that's gonna be above that is residential part. There's, there've been businesses down there, the garage business, the house beside it, has been occupied by business for as long as I've been here. The, the, the buildings are gonna change, but that particular spot has not been residential. It is currently zoned, C three currently allows commercial use there. I think largely they can do what they want to do, and that portion is without much of a change at all.
I was gonna say, I think based on the PUD we're talking about, it would actually be more restrictive than the, the existing zone, because they're offering to write some stuff into it that would prevent some of the businesses that could potentially go there, and the other piece of it is, they, they're agreeing by doing it as a PUDC, that that's the way they're gonna build it, not, that right now somebody could walk in down there and build whatever they want, as long as it was a, it good with the, with the C three zone.
Yeah, I do think it's a good way to make it.
Right, and I mean, it does, it technically makes it more restrictive on the developer to do what they say they're gonna do, as opposed to just going in and putting a business in. Mr. Taylor? Sorry, Jason's speaking, I didn't. So on your drafts, you know, these artist renderings, you do have Brew House and a couple of other things you've shown, I mean, do you have plans in place today, or these are just speculative ideas that you are working on?
It, it, I, I, I kind of live the redoing these and taking that off, because we, we do not, this, this is the first time that this has been seen by anyone today. So we have not marketed this, it hasn't been brought to the, to the general public, those are just names on a wall, so they're not indicative of what, what's gonna go there. I mean, we, we, I would go back to the descriptive list, not a descriptive, but restrictive list that we have to put, what can and cannot go there. If I could, I would like to respond to, to your comments, and just, just some specific things that aren't really shown. On, on the building, the, the commercial building that we're doing, our back door is not unlike your house, in that it is gonna be the front door, so the back of this building, it can look like the back of a building, because it's really gonna be the front of the building. The Alexander side, while it addresses a street and it's developed for the street, the, the backside is, is really the front door, and from an architectural standpoint, it will be developed as much or more than the Alexander Street elevation. So it's not like you're, you know, architecturally speaking, it's not gonna be like looking at.
Not have this phase, we have to be looking at.
You know, I don't know specifically, if we have to, we, we will, I have it addressed that specifically.
Mr. Taylor, do you have an idea of the ones that are gonna be?
I mean, speculating they're gonna be, in the range is probably gonna, preclude students, it's really going to address the professionals, the young professional, we, the, the planning, the pre-planning we have in place is, got provisions for home office, and we can see, you know, professionals that work from home. And I think, I don't know the exact number, I, I don't think it's comparative to, to other places that are gonna be open to a broad group of people, they are gonna be higher.
Mr. Chairman, we still hold the opposition destroyed eighteen minutes, everybody in opposition, I don't, I don't know about.
Anybody else? Would like to speak in opposition?
I have a rich cobble, I live at three fifteen dollar street, that's a good looking building about everywhere, it really is. So I just have a couple of things on my end, I don't really have much of a dog in that fight, but. But I guess my view is, it's more of a family neighborhood, and this is kind of what I think that people would do, and echo to some of the folks here, we've got some families in that neighborhood, and that cross traffic has gotten pretty, pretty aggressive, right? So if there is a, and I don't know how far along this happens to be, if it's already a done deal, but if there is a, some move to make this happen, there's gonna have to be something done along those cross streets to slow stuff down, it's just, it's the way that is, there are a number of families that are starting to move in, so I'm hoping that at some point maybe you have kids in the neighborhood or something, so that cross streets, that cross traffic's gonna pretty soon. I just didn't, when I looked at this, and I didn't get the chance to really dive into it, but it just seemed to me like it didn't fit the neighborhood. I mean, like, I, I could, yeah, I get the commercial side of things, because that little building seems like it would be a great bar, or like, I'm sorry, my, my, it's not that hard, it seems like it would be a great bar, like a mechanic shop, but that, the residential doesn't make a lot of sense to me. On that east, on the right side, on State Street, where you've got a bunch of apartments, that seems to me the, the right place to do the residential commercial area, that everything along what you're talking about just seems not to fit, in my opinion, because you've got those residential areas behind. Then I, I, I thought about the, what would, what type of business would actually go in there? Because of the way that is, it just seems to me it would constrict you as to what could go in there, and that could affect the neighborhood as well, right? Obviously it can't be like some sexual thing, but what if it's a smoke shop or something like that, I, I don't know what would be put into that commercial piece, just because it's such an odd position, I guess. And then I think, I just wanna go back to the parking portion, I think you said the base level had parking, is that correct? And then I have like three levels above that, but that still doesn't address, I don't think, unless I'm just talking crazy, like when you have vents down the water, and how that impedes and goes up into the neighborhood as well, so, I mean, the parking's gonna continue to be a problem. I thought when I looked at this, that that area seems to me, again, I don't know if this is a done deal or whether, a good transition neighborhood for your foot traffic, with something else besides residential areas there, I get, I can understand the commercial, doesn't seem to fit, but again, I'm not opposed to development, I just thought, my, the way I view that neighborhood, you've got one family neighborhood within that development that's gonna all around it. You've got your commercial residential that you're pushing back towards number one, it just seems like it was just kind of odd, the way that was thrown in there. And I, I think one of the things I hear at the, a local council or a local town meetings is, I think one way you made this point of, the community piece, the more apartments you put in there, the more transient of a population that's gonna be there, so your community meeting, all of that stuff that you're trying to gain from a neighborhood just kind of goes away. I think those are my points, again, the traffic, parking, kind of the way that fits into the neighborhood it's in, it just doesn't seem like it fits at all, but those are just my some observations, again, how far along this is, but, and again, I don't have a dog in that fight, other than I just a couple of streets, so, appreciate your time, and thanks for drawing.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, if it'd be appropriate, I, I would like to ask more questions of Mr. Taylor.
Sure.
Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with you, and I'm kind of new in council, it's a bit secret, but, but it's my understanding that you live in Congry Park, is that correct?
Correct.
And you also develop Congry Park, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And did you give me the price range of houses in Congry Park?
Currently?
Current, I mean, I mean, with an estimate, I mean, of how much they're going for.
Well, I guess the fortunate thing is, not many sell in there, I think there's only been like two sales in the last five or seven years. I'm also a builder too, so I've built about seven houses in Congry Park and the neighboring Village Riverwalk, but I'd say the range is six hundred and fifty thousand of several million.
Yeah, that, that would be mine, I would say you do it.
Yes.
And, and so, having your house there, with a four house being an average price of five to six hundred thousand, you would not want to put a cheap shabby name basically across the street where people would do it?
That's not my intention, that's.
And, and I would imagine that these apartments, I believe that New Brooklyn apartments are going for maybe around eighteen hundred dollars a month, I'm old.
For a studio?
Yeah, or, or a studio, I mean, I, I'm very, very exquisite, there's no, I mean, there's not students in there that I know of, so I would imagine that these might be maybe somewhere in that range, maybe a little bit more?
A little more.
And, and, and are you, I'm sure that you're familiar with the, the other apartment, Globe Apartments, yeah?
Yes.
And in those Globe Apartments, do you have an idea of how much they're going for?
I think six fifty to a million on the river.
Yeah, I would, I would infer it would be somewhere in that neighborhood, so, I'm just trying to at least paint the picture some, is that I think that these are, you would think that these are going to be long-term residents in those apartments, in their name. they're not going to be short-term people living there for one year. They're probably going to be, I mean, probably going to be a little bit higher, essentially economic standpoint to move there and be able to afford those apartments.
Yes, sir. That's the target part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have y'all considered some? Or is it always been residential, like, or real?
So, how long have you listened to this? I've got, I've got one more for a lot of people we're talking about. There's been a number of questions about, about, because it says Brew House only. If, a lot of municipalities now, Columbia's done this, on these smaller infield type sites, they've lifted parking requirements and let that up to the developer because to actually do a brew house, you have to have a situation like Savage Craft where there's lots of public people trying to park in your car. Or like WeGo Beer Garden where you look at that lot, the actual building area of that lot's very small, but the parking, the ratio of parking area to building area is a lot because you're selling alcohol. I think there's, I think it comes sixteen inch spots on Alaway.
Eighteen.
Eighteen spots. Yeah, so that's going to, because there's, the parking's so limited, that's really going to dictate a lot of the commercial uses that you get there. I, I, again, for the Alexander Road frontage and you're not, I would be very, I'd be very surprised if we ended up getting like a heavy cocaine or an alcohol-based kind of, kind of business there, just for that reason.
I'd be happy to share this, but let's just say we wanted to do like the mayor said and just come and be fully compliant with existing zoning and just be, you know, about every rule that's in place as we speak today. And we wanted to put parking there. This is a tip of ordinary layout for doing such thing. It's twelve spaces. So, we're, you know, it's not a lot, but it's a fifty percent increase over keeping what's there. You know, if you're, if you just look at the response totally to the, to the parking requirement and the ability to achieve in this way or the way that we're proposing to do so, that's how we arrived at the layout that we did, is about maximizing that potential.
While you're still there, I'd like to take a chance that I don't get very often, which is the public, thank you for allowing public use of the green space that you own between Stone River and I Riverwalk, which is enjoyed by so many families. It was actually so good to get here.
Thank you.
Before we, that was the five minute revolver, I guess, something again. All right, so at this point, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and move on to the new business. And under new business, we have consideration requests establish PUDC on approximately point seven five acres and near three twenty-sixth Alzana Road, one oh one Augusta Street. Those are tax map numbers, zero zero four six seven dash twenty-one dash zero zero one, zero zero four six seven, or four six four seven dash twenty-one dash zero zero two, zero zero four six four seven dash zero two dash zero zero three and zero zero four six four seven, that's zero two, that's zero zero four. Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the PUDC as presented. We have a motion to approve.
So, there'll be a recommendation to city council.
Recommendation to city council, right. Any further discussion? And just for sake of clarity for everybody on the bench, city council members do not vote on this report.
That's right. That's correct. This is just a plan, we should action.
Thank you. Yeah, we're just recommending to council. Without any further ado.
Do you have a second? I'm sorry.
We got a second then. Okay. Any further discussion? You're none, all in favor? Any opposed?
I don't think there's any more than that. We can answer.
Run you the eye as well.
Yes.
Eye.
So, it's a gap, you know, those.
It's now, it's one abstention. All right, we have no whole business on this agenda, and our next regular scheduled meeting will be May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, which is next week, same time, same place. I'd like again to thank you everybody for being here. We do appreciate your support in these matters, and we appreciate the support of the city. So, without any further ado, do we have a motion to adjourn? You have a motion to adjourn? Have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Put some cares. Thank y'all.